So it is seven o'clock somewhere. And it's seven o'clock here. So I'd like to welcome all of you. And just a friendly reminder, if you have cell phones, please put them on silent or airplane mode so they don't disrupt the meeting here. And then also, would you please join me in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So, welcome, everyone that's here this evening, as well as those that are going to be watching us, hopefully later on, on YouTube. First order is I'd like to make some introductions. This evening, we have sitting in for our chief of police, we have Officer Heinz with us. Thank you. And we have Sarah Sensala with Kennedy and Graven, our city attorney. Then we have Brian Grimm, who is our finance director. And sitting next to me, we have Jasper Kruegel, who is our city administrator. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And next to me are council members Pam Mortenson, John Chumperlin, Ann McGregor, and Kathleen Refkin. And then we also have our city engineer with WSB, we have Allison Fousky. Gary Peters is our public works director. And then Ally Palfus is our director of administration. And then behind Ally, we have our city clerk taking notes, Don Matzko. With that, I'll move to approve the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Staff council? If none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumperlin. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Five oh. We'll move on to a special presentation. An exciting presentation by Mr. Grimm, our third quarter financial update. Do you have a PowerPoint or anything?
I do not.
All right.
So, no, and this will be really quick. It was submitted on the packet pages, three through fourteen, as noted in the memo. The revenues and expenditures are both tracking very comparable to this previous points of the same time last year. Our building permit revenue, I think, has, homes continue to be built in Woodland Cove by Gagnon and MNI, so we're tracking pretty well there as far as building permits. Unless I'll probably open it up if there's any questions from the council on either the revenue expenditure or cash for all funds reports, so.
A question, you know, building permits, do they, are we on track? Have you seen what the, last year, what it was from September or from October, November, December?
Yeah.
As we're kind of getting into the colder months and maybe not as much building?
Yeah, and it usually does tend to slow down a little bit, obviously, this time of year, but I think we'll still meet or exceed our projected budgeted numbers for the building permits, just looking at, you know, talking with community development as well as looking at last year's, so.
And then, do the numbers that are in our packet, do they reflect the current numbers from, from the McIntunes project?
Oh, as far as their development fees?
Right.
That came in just in a, within the last week or so here.
Okay.
So that would not be in the, like the park dedication fund, water fees, etc.
And, and building permit fees and all of that.
Correct. Yeah. As far as the, the permit fees will come in later, but we've just received, like, more of the park dedication, the water area charges and those types of things.
Okay, so that'll be in a future?
In the fourth quarter, that'll be reflected.
Okay, great, thank you. Other questions? All right. That was quick.
There you go. I didn't want to make people wait.
You don't want to make people wait, and you don't want to make them yawn, right? No, just kidding.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. So next, then, we'll move on to persons to be heard. We're going to start out with Christine Devine. Again, I'm just going to state it, you have three minutes, you have to come to the podium. You have to state your name and address again. Please come forward.
Thank you, I'm Christine Devine. I live at 5335 East View Avenue. And I am here to, once again, plead with you in regard to the proposed water main replacement and full reconstruction of the Morningview, Eastview neighborhood. And remind you that this project, as it is currently proposed, does not increase accessibility, water quality, or longevity of our water mains, which ends up counteracting sustainability initiatives across the board. The full reconstruction project actually results in our neighborhood losing upwards of fifty trees. If the project was just focused on the area that does indeed show in Gary's memo to have hot soil issues, that would require the loss of five trees. So ten percent of the neighborhood would be impacted. Eighty-five percent of the project is in an area that only has, and has had, two issues since the water main was put in. That's it. Not multiple issues, just two, on eighty-five percent of the proposed project. And the proposed price take to all of our residents, because our city doesn't have the funds currently, so the project cost to us is shown to be about a ten, ten thousand dollar price take to us, which will be fifteen thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars if we take the financing option, and that's assuming a four percent rate over that twenty years. This, in my opinion, unnecessary increase to our water costs, extensive neighborhood disruption, and excessive spending is just not necessary and could certainly be done with reclamation of our roadways. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cindy Notch.
Hello, I'm Cindy Notch, and I live on Morningview Drive. I want to take just a moment to talk to you about your packet right now. I've been watching your packets online for months, as you know. And it's kind of funny, actually, actually, very sad. But on your current resolution, you say that each property will be ten thousand dollars per residential unit. And then you said that Gillespie Park will be twenty thousand, and the Westwood Church will be twenty-three thousand. It's the River Valley Church. You've had it wrong for months. That is one small indication of what I can, if I was, if I was sitting in your shoes, I wouldn't be very happy with that kind of quality of work, and I thank you guys to sort of more. I think you've been poorly served. The vast majority, there are three households who do want reconstruction on my street. To be honest with you, I'll be transparent. However, the vast majority signed the statement, they said, "We, the undersigned tax impact persons, all agree that we want the city to repair the top eight inches of our road surface via the reclamation process. We feel the city's intention to dig down eight feet or more to replace our water main that has fifty-one more years of serviceable life is factually unwarranted at this time and would be fiscally and environmentally wasteful." That was signed by Rick Grundmeyer, Sandy Grundmeyer, Karen Hefner, Ellen Hefner, Darla Leninkin, Dennis Maxwell, Pam Maxwell, Mike Hope, Stacy Hope, Jason Amandi, Julie Amandi, Christine Devine, Dave Ockham, Tom James, Margaret James, John Minahan, Kathy Minahan, Judd Griffith, Chris Griffith, Kelly Jermainson, Jennifer Jermainson, Deborah Navy, Tim Latner, Cheryl Latner, Chick Myers, Sharon Myers, the Savoda Shualbee family, the Heinz family, Ray Burgers, Lisa Henry, Tom Keel, Paul Silver, he did it twice because he owns two properties, Gislah Schubert, Ray Stoll, Barb Stoll, Mike Hecker, Iris Hecker, Tom Notch, Tim Notch, Dave Laney, Lyndon Laney, Jim McKeetrom, Steve Roberts, Sarah Roberts, Vince Beacon, Pam Beacon, Peter Zuber, Chad Olinger, Gary Gunderson, Jeannie Gunderson, Mark Conti, Geraldine Conti, Dennis Waiki, Candy Waiki, Sean Everhart, Eric Drayman, Berta Suter, Michael Brain, Mark Schultz, Sandy Schultz, Alex Andrew Erickson, Nicole Erickson, Doug Wagner, Steve Wagner, Renee McFadden, Mike Maslowski, Teresa Maslowski, Cindy Lund, Roger Lund, Joe Gage, Juan Gage, Steve Nurhan, Nancy Nurhan, Deb Ewing, Nicholas Ewing, Tony Leonard, Rebecca Leonard, Candace Carlson, John Nagel, Renee Nagel, Dave Galate, Rebecca Galate, Gary Eastburn, Kate Eastburn, Abby Waiki, Trevor Waiki, Kate Eastburn, Scott Nagel, Gary Johnson, Susan Johnson, Jason Lund, Don Zane, Panic Zane. When you each were elected, I'm quite sure you said you would represent the citizens of this city.
Thank you, Ms. Notch. I have, I do have to interrupt you. We have three minutes, and you've just gone over, so thank you very much.
You said you represent us, and we expect you to do so.
Thank you.
There's been no proof that the water main is leaking like Swiss cheese.
Thank you, Ms. Notch. Mr. Notch? Again, I'm going to remind everybody, you have three minutes. We've been here and listened to all of you for many, many meetings, so please be respectful here. Please state your name and address for the record, Mr. Notch.
Yeah, I'm Tom Notch, 1250 Morningview Drive. And what I wanted to bring to your attention, basically, there's, pass this out to the people here on the, but this is a table, and this is what, basically, the consultants are hanging their hat on when they tell you that our water main only has fifty years of life left. And if you look at this, this DI at the top is ductile iron, and they got two different groups, one is LSL and SSL. And it says down below what they indicate. LSL is the relatively long service life for material resulting from some combination of benign soil conditions and evolving lane practices. SSL indicates relatively short service life for material resulting from some combination of harsh ground conditions and early lane practices. So basically, what they're using, they're using this fifty-year life, and you can see if it was LSL, it's a hundred and ten-year life. Our water main is probably somewhere in the middle there, okay? The other thing I wanted to show you, too, is that the life for this PVC that's been put in here is only fifty-five years, okay? So it's not the best product. If you were going to replace it, PVC, in my opinion, wouldn't be the way to go, and I've got forty-two years of experience as a professional engineer. The second sheet that I gave you, it just shows, and this is from AE2S, and I talked to this engineer from there. And you can see, there's a very small area here in red where we've got these aggressive, high corrosivity soils. And it's a very small area, and it's interesting to note, this is an area where some of the water mains already been replaced, okay? But it may make sense to look at that, but we haven't had any issues, no leaks, seven years, and I have no reason to think it's going to change anytime soon. So at any rate, I think those are things we should, should be taking into account. And then the other thing is, when AE2S on their, they were looking at here, they had three options that they listed here. One was to do nothing, one was street replacement with no improvements to the storm sewer, alternate three, street replacement, water main replacement, and then water, storm sewer replacement, you know? And there should have been a fourth option, and that should have been road reclamation, and then also replacing and repairing the stormwater as needed. And I encourage you to do that. I feel we're being poorly served by our consultant. And on the last sheet here, this was prepared by Allison over here, but they're just talking about this, and it says, "Does a recommended action meet the city mission statement?" Check yes. And the city mission statement's right below it, and it says, "City administrat will deliver quality services in a cost-effective and innovative manner, provide opportunities for high-quality life while protecting natural resources and maintaining rural character." Well, we're not doing that. We're not being cost-effective here because we're wasting over two million dollars. It doesn't need to get wasted. And then also, we're not conserving our, our natural resources, protecting our trees, fifty trees, bye-bye. And they're beautiful trees, we sent you pictures of them. That's all I have, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Notch. And then, lastly, we have Ron Retschel.
Good evening, Ron Retschel, 12:30 Morningview Drive. Good afternoon, good afternoon here. I just want to reiterate what I had said before with regards to reclamation versus reconstruction, to emphasize we need the storm sewer. To do the storm sewer right, you're going to need to adjust on the street grade and the profiles, build a match of properties better. And in a reclamation, we're going to have very limited opportunity to do that, but we need the storm sewer. I've been there only two and a half years now, and that, but the first thing I heard about the property was how the storm sewer, how much drainage is coming down both sides. I've spent a lot of money dealing with the water that's coming down both sides of my house, and that, and it would be really, remove you to miss this opportunity to correct this storm sewer that needs to be done here for so long. To do that, you need four weeks' time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have anybody else signed up. I'll allow it, if you can come, and you'll have to give me your name.
Sure.
Hi, this is Rob Lieber, live at 5420 East View Avenue. I've missed a few meetings, I apologize, trying to get caught up here a little bit. I wasn't sure when this happened, or even if it has happened. Is it a foregone conclusion that we are just down to two choices right now?
What I would suggest is that you stay for the duration of the meeting, because we will be discussing this project under business items.
One of the reasons I left before, and again, I apologize for missing out here, but it seems like all the work that has been done by a few people here really is falling on deaf ears, and some people just can't make it here, plain and simple, yet they want their voices heard. And the people that have been doing that have done a pretty very good job, if you ask me. Granted, it's, nothing's perfect, nothing's going to please everybody, but as council members, I hope you do what I feel right, and I think a lot of people feel is right. Do what's best for the most, the majority, and you're going to sleep good at night. And if this is, and it seems like a foregone conclusion, and I don't really want to waste anybody's time here, just like I don't want my time wasted, but it seems like it is a foregone conclusion that that's what we're down to, is two, and it seems like it would be a real easy for a yes or no answer that nobody should have to sit here and wait till the end, if in fact, we are down to two. Can somebody just answer that?
Down to two what?
Two choices.
Well, that'll be discussed.
All or nothing.
Yeah, will be.
So this isn't a foregone conclusion, we do have a chance to change minds that have already been made up.
We will be discussing that at, under our business items.
We?
The council will be discussing it, yes.
Without input from us?
No. We have, okay, is that the end of your comments?
Well, I'd like an answer on that.
Well, my answer is, we are going to be discussing the road project or projects.
Sure.
We will be discussing that at a council level in about ten minutes, or less.
So any opposition to that at this point?
You've, you're stating it right now, so I'm not going to argue with you.
I got you. I'm just, I'm not real familiar with all the workings here, so that's just what I was going to ask.
All right.
Thanks for your time.
So, to say we're not listening is a huge understatement. We have sat here for seven meetings, and we have listened attentively to everybody that has signed up. We have, no, if you want to interrupt, if anybody wants to interrupt these proceedings, you will be asked to leave. We have sat here very respectfully. We have listened to everything that you have said. We're not taking it lightly. We have sat here and we have listened for seven meetings. People have signed up under persons to be heard. We have, we had a neighborhood meeting where we were here for over an hour and a half. We, again, addressed your questions, we concerns, we've heard your concerns. We also had an open house at our last meeting. For an hour, we were here for half an hour prior to our meeting. After that, it moved out into the lobby, answering more questions. Again, here we are tonight, listening to your concerns. We have had numerous, numerous calls, as well as emails. We have read, and all of them. I will guarantee you that all of us have read all of them. So to say we have not listened is not fair and is not correct. We are going to be discussing this project in just a little while, and you will be able to hear the discussion that we're having. I'm not going to ask for your input again, because after seven meetings, after eight, nine meetings, actually, and all of the input, I think, well, we are all very well-versed in what everybody's positions are. So with that, I'm going to now move on to our next agenda item, and that is our consent agenda. With that, are there any consent agenda items you wish to remove? If not, they consist of consent agenda, A, approve our work session meeting minutes from October 3, 2022; B is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from October 3, 2022; C is approve our claims; D is approve our reimbursement resolution regarding the 2023 road projects; E is accept resignation of police officer John Studeberg, effective October 13, 2022; F is a resolution approving a task order for WSB engineering to provide GPS device support for the city administrata; and G is a resolution directing and authorizing the city administrator to engage the city of St. Boniface to develop a cost-share agreement relating to a mutually beneficial water interconnect project; H is a resolution authorizing the transfer of well from the city to the West Tonka Public School District, number 277; and I is a resolution authorizing execution of a temporary construction and access easement with Woodland Cove Apartments LLC. Any questions or ones you wish to remove? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through I as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumperlin. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. Now we will move on to our business items, and they consist of discussion of the road projects. I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Fousky, I believe.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this evening, there are two items for your consideration. One is to consider adopt, adopting a resolution ordering the project, and in conjunction with that, if the council chooses to order the project, the second action requested is to approve professional services for final design and bidding services. This evening, I'd like to take an opportunity to provide a very quick summary. I know the council and most present here this evening are familiar with the project. Very quickly, the, the project location is outlined here. The proposed project, as we've discussed thus far, is reconstructing the street with curb and gutter. Current widths of the streets between twenty and twenty-four feet, and proposed widths from back of curb to back, to back of curb between twenty-two and twenty-four feet. I also wanted to point out that a few years ago, after some discussion, the council did add an additional one inch of battumeness to our standard street section, and in doing so, the intent was to extend the lifespan of the street, another ten years or so was the goal. So those have been incorporated into the plans for this project, as they have in past projects, so I just wanted to remind council of that policy decision that continues to be executed. The other component of the project proposed is some storm sewer improvements, installation of the storm sewer throughout the project, and then a new storm outlet in the fire lane at the east end of Eastview Avenue, some minor sanitary sewer improvements to abate some inflow and infiltration issues at the, at the sanitary sewer manholes, replacing the rings there. Water main replacement, which I'll dive a little bit deeper into in the next slides. And just a reminder that the public hearing was held at the last meeting on October 3. So what I wanted to provide with the council is some of the data that's been collected. The, in red, is the documented water main breaks provided by Public Works. I've indicated on the map what the type of break is and the year that it occurred, so this is over the span of approximately eleven years. You can see it's throughout the project area, with the exception of Eastview Avenue on the north side. Also included on the map, I thought it would be helpful for the council to see the locations where soil samples were taken for, to indicate whether they were corrosive. So those, that's throughout the project corridor, on every street within the project, and the soil samples came back between corrosive and highly corrosive. So those are indicated here on this map. The other proposed, proposed component of this water main project is to upsize from a six-inch to eight-inch nuts for fire protection services. So I believe this was actually handed out to you this evening by Mr. Notch as well, but this is from the American Waterworks Association, billed no longer, and highlighted is the, for the Midwest region, ductile iron pipe, either a long service life or a short service life. And I wanted to note the difference between what was considered a short service life and a long service life, and part of that is the ground conditions. And so I thought that was important to remind the council. I know you've seen, you've, we've talked about this before. When we look at ground conditions in this area, as indicated on the previous slide, all the soil samples came back as corrosive to highly corrosive. This is also something that the council's seen previously. This was the AE2S discussion on what different pipe materials are considered for water main. Cast iron, shown in blue, is not something that's used in the city, the discussion being between ductile iron and PVC. I've included on this a notation that the current age of the pipe is approximately forty-eight years, and that between years thirty to forty-one, that's when we, we had documentation on eleven water main breaks. So I just wanted to provide that summary for council this evening. The other component that we've heard recently with this project is impact to trees. So in the preliminary design, by my count on looking at these maps, there is approximately forty-one tree conflicts identified. Now with preliminary design, because it's, it's high level, it hasn't gone into an iterative process that you typically go through with final design, to look at opportunities to reduce those impacts. That number can very well change. Tree impacts are due for a number of reasons, one being the location of the water main if it's replaced, another is the location of the water services, which are proposed to be replaced with this project. And then another component would be with the alignment of the street. Quite simply, there are, there can be trees that are close enough to the roadway that, in order to do any work on the roadway, they would need to be removed. So certainly with final design, we do look at opportunities to save trees, and in this instance, what we're proposing, should the council authorize the work, is that a tree specialist be utilized? And what that would do is, is to look at an inventory by species, health and condition of the, the trees within the project corridor, the location, why were they identified for impact, and look at opportunities to try to save some trees. And the reason we want to look at that is to have a tree specialist that knows there are certain tree types that can withstand construction next to them and certain ones that can't. If there's a high-quality trees, there are an opportunity to look at shifting and alignment of a road, for example, shifting the alignment of a utility, those sorts of things happen with final design. So that would be something that would occur should final design proceed with the reconstruction The projected cost in financing is summarized here, it's also included in the council packet. We're at approximately four-point-three million dollars for this improvement project, with a portion of that cost specially assessed, and the breakdown of the funding sources are shown here. And I also wanted to go through the project schedule as well for the council. So this evening, for your consideration, is to order the improvements. Should the council indeed do so, we would look at bringing back plans and specifications in January and request authorization to add, to advertise for bids. Due to the size of this project, we do have to run the advertisement for a minimum of twenty-one days, which would, we anticipate a bid opening sometime in February, and that has to do with the timeline of when we advertise, both in the trade papers and then as well as the local paper. This hits the goal, the city council's goal has historically been to try to bid projects early in the year so that we can make these, get as many contractors' eyes on these as possible, as they're looking to fill their dockets for the summer. Then we would be bringing the assessment hearing and word of contract in March. The other component that I wanted to expand on this evening is construction phasing for a project like this. It can certainly look daunting when you look at the size of the project and anticipate a summer's worth of construction through the whole project. As we've indicated previously, that we anticipate phasing this project in three phases, and I wanted to expand on that a little bit, in the event that some are concerned with, with, you know, construction occurring throughout the summer. So we looked at three, again, three phases, about six weeks for each phase. This is, of course, weather permitting. A day of rain can delay a project more than one day, but this is, this is what we're anticipating for a project schedule. So you'd have six weeks in each project phase, and the phasing would actually... And the phasing would actually, um, it would overlap somewhat. So for example, if you had, um, if you had the utility crew finish up in phase one, they could move on to phase two. And then you would have a grading and street crew come in and finish up in phase one to blade out the, the rock and get the first layer of bituminous and curb and gutter in. So you would see some overlap in those instances between phases. Um, but we would, again, we would be looking at about a six-week schedule in each, in each phase. Um, after that, we would be looking at substantial completion sometime in October because of course we do wanna build in a little bit of contingency for the contractor in case they do come up with some weather. So we, we do wanna be, um, cognizant of that. So, um, that's what I wanted to come to the council with tonight is just to provide a summary of some of the things we've discussed, some of the data that has gone into consideration. And this, um, expanding on the project schedule and phasing.
Thank you, Ms. Vowsky. Anybody ha- council, do you have questions of Ms. Vowsky?
Yes.
Okay.
When we started putting the extra inch of asphalt, three or four years ago, what is now the projected life if the road is properly maintained?
So it originally, I think typically you look at fifty-year lifespan and we were looking to add ten years. We would go to anticipate sixty years.
So that's doing the milling overlays and the crack repairs and so properly as we've done with other streets, just to properly maintain road, in theory would not need to be reclaimed or reconstructed for sixty years?
We were looking at, um, we, you might have a reclamation component in there at some point, which is what you add to, to some of the reclaimed roads through here. Um, but the goal is to try to, to do more overlays than a reclamation project.
So we're t- in theory then, based on roads we've done in the past with the extra inch now, we're talking reclaim probably is out at forty years?
Yeah, 'cause I mean, you're looking at some of the roads that we've been reclaiming so far have been in the thirty-year timeframe.
Which was under the old.
Under the old one, yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct.
Of the trees, I drove through there. Um, a lot of them are right on the, right on the curb. Or there's no curb, but they're right on the edge. But there's some that are set back quite a ways that are also tagged. Who tagged them?
I don't know who tagged them.
Okay. Based on what? I may ask, may I ask?
The ones that are in junk because where the water pools to the house.
Yeah.
To the shop. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, 'cause that, there were a couple of them that were way back in the yard. Okay, thanks. Um, there's also, is there an issue with, some of those trees are sitting right out? So when we come, if we did reconstruct, if we did the water main, is there possibility that we have to move the connection to the house as well because of how it sits with the, with the road, the new road? We, we talked about possibly realigning the road a little bit, possibly.
So if I'm understanding your, your question correctly, Councilmember Chumperlin, is you're asking if the water services can be relocated? Um, that's a good question. So certainly, there is some opportunity to shift where it connects to the water main. So for example, if there's a tree that, um, is desired to be saved next to, near to the roadway, um, but we would, we would have to come, come back in and connect to the, the remainder that goes to the house, if that makes sense. So instead of it being a straight shot, we'd come in at an angle or something like that. Um, I think there are some properties out here that aren't connected to water. So that would certainly provide some leeway where those are placed. But that's, those are some of the things that you go through with the final design process.
Okay. And one more from me, if I may. Uh, number of streets here, some of them long, some of them short. In the construction process, well, I imagine it's up to the construction company, but how do we envision? I mean, they, do they tear all the streets out at once? Or do they start on one and kind of roll it out, if you know what I'm saying? I know the phases infer to me that you tear everything out and then you do the next stage on everything and so on. But is that the way it would happen? You'd go all the way out and down and around and?
That's a good question, Councilmember Chumperlin. So when we look at, at how this would be phased, there's, there's a few components. So for example, one component of removals would be tree removal. And we would anticipate that would happen throughout the project corridor at the very beginning. Um, as far as when we get into deep construction, whether it's storm sewer or if it's going deeper with water main replacement. Um, I, I don't anticipate you would have, um, we would, we could put it in the specifications that they can't do the reclamation of the road all at once. And contractors typically don't wanna do that because, um, they know that it'll be many weeks until they can get into that area. And a reclamation project, i- if you reclaimed the road and left it in that, in that condition and you get hit with a very large rain event, that washes away, um, your reclamation surface. And it's, it's a mess for the contractors and it's a mess for residents, most importantly. And so, uh, we typically will restrict that removal at that time. So we would, a- again, there would be some overlap where you would have, you know, in, in the second phase, you would have the, the reclaimed surface. At the same time, you would have perhaps a rock surface on the first phase. Um, but they, they certainly wouldn't come in and, and remove all the pavement at once because that's just too much of an area opened up, um, at once. And again, with, with excavation, when it comes to utilities, um, that's, the excavation trenches are only open during the working hours. It is, it is filled in, backfilled at night so that residents can pass through there.
Okay. And you in turn are keeping the neighborhood advised as to what's taking place in a given area at a given time?
Correct. So, um, over the past few years, um, I, I think Ally can, can vouch for this. We, we've been doing a lot of website updates with these. And then specifically, if there's a, if there's a concern with access to the home, um, we work directly with that property owner, knocking on the door, indicating, you know, that the contractor will be out here. Um, we ask, like, for instance, there are times where there's somebody, let's say, that, um, is, has a, a, a disability, a physical disability, that they need help getting out of their home. That's things that we need to know about beforehand so that we can make sure we can get people in and out of their home into doctor's appointments and such. Um, so, so there's a lot of communication that has to go on with these projects. Um, and we do, and construction can change. The schedule can change from eight in the morning, um, and can change by tw- two o'clock that afternoon. Um, but we've always done our best to be able to keep people in, uh, in the know of what's going on and what impact they would have.
Okay. And if I may, one more. And I think this is just confirmation. Whether it's a reclaim or whether it's a reconstruct, uh, other than the reconstruction goes, you're working, usually you're digging up water main or whatever. It's still, it's basically the same other, other than a reconstruct has a sand base under the subgrade which helps to disperse water buildup. So it's all, I mean, the black, the asphalt, all of that's still the same and the, and the base?
Um, that's a really good question too. So, yes, so with a reconstruction, we look at a street section that has, you put fabric on there to keep materials from, from the sand and the class five from going down and, and migrating up. So you put the fabric in, you also have the sand section, and then you have a consistent, um, rocker class five section. And then your bituminous. With a reclamation project, um, in this project area, I don't have the number at my fingertips, but I know that the existing class five or rock underneath the pavement cha- is, it, it all, it varies. Um, and then with a reclamation project, with you grinding up that top layer of, of pavement, um, you would ex- ex- export some of that to get your new four and a half inches of bituminous. So your four and a half is consistent whether you're reclaiming or reconstructing. But the, the depth of your, your class five will, will vary, um, because it's not consistent throughout the corridor. And then the reclamation would not have the sand underneath of.
But a reclaim would still be a forty to fifty-year life?
Um, a reclamation project, probably twenty-five, thirty.
Right, okay. Thank you.
I'm gonna, more questions, because?
Let's say we don't do it. What's the worst that could happen in the next two years? It's the very worst. Are people gonna be flooded out?
For not doing any project at all. So there's two components to that. There's certainly the road surface continues to deteriorate. Um, it's in a condition where I think even the residents that are opposed to the reconstruction, um, from what I've heard is they, they would support a resurfacing or reclamation project. That's one component. The second component has to do with utilities. Um, as we've indicated, the, the water main, um, there's the history of the breaks. Um, and as far as when the next round main break would come in, I'm not certain, but it's.
Okay. So let's say we don't do it. Um, and we get a major water main break. Is the city gonna rush in and fix it?
Yeah, certainly, you know, water main breaks, the, the Public Works crew is deployed. Um, I'm not sure if they do all of those in-house or if they get, um, I suppose it depends on the severity of the break. They might need to get a contractor to come in and do that replacement. Um, the, certainly it disrupts water service to the residents, but it is, it is fixed. The timeframe to get it fixed, I think, would vary. Um, and then they would backfill the, the repair and put a patch in the road.
Other questions? So, um, I was talking with Jasper earlier. Um, could you share some information with us that you got from the Ductile Iron Pipe Research Association? I think that's the name of the group, right?
Y- yeah, um, yeah, I can thank you, Mayor Wayland. Uh, I mentioned this briefly at the neighborhood meeting that we had, um, at the end of August. But I've been in communication with the Ductile Iron Pipe Research Association. And they have this, uh, the ability to reach out to one of their engineers. You can just contact one of their engineers and ask him some questions. Um, and what I did is I reached out to that engineer. Uh, they, uh, shared some of the soil, um, soil data, the resistivity data. Uh, they have a neat little, uh, worksheet that you can fill out and it, it kinda scores things based on, you know, resistivity and a bunch of other factors. Uh, but as soon as you get to a score of ten, and it's kinda arbitrary if you don't have the, the worksheet in front of you, but then that indicates that your, your, your ductile iron pipe should be coated, um, with, with plastic. So it's poly or some other, um, bio V or some other thing. Um, and it kind of explained to them that, you know, this individual that, you know, our, our, our pipe is forty-nine years old. And he kinda gave some options as far as what they would recommend doing. So one of the things that they asked was, well, do you wanna upsize the pipe? And we said, yeah, we, our city spec is eight inches, uh, we have six inch there right now. So we would look to upsize it. And he said, well, in the, in that case, if you weren't gonna upsize it, we'd recommend that you wrap the pipe, um, and all of the fittings and components in plastic and, you know, excavate and do all that as a remedy to try to get more life out of that. You'd also add some anodes to the, to the fittings to, to, um, uh, reduce the amount of corrosive, uh, um, activity that you see on the pipe. Because those anodes can draw on that corrosiveness for a, a period of about twenty-five years. Um, so they said, if we weren't gonna upsize it, we should, uh, we, we should wrap it in plastic. Um, so that entails excavating and, and, you know, exposing the pipe and, and doing all that. Uh, but if we're gonna upsize, they would recommend that we replace it with ductile iron pipe that is wrapped in, in plastic with all the anti-corrosive bolts and fittings and things of that nature and actually wrapping all those in plastic as well. Um, because our soils, um, you know, throughout the project, not just in the area that, uh, we've had, you know, probably the most concentration of, of breaks, as you can see on the, on the screen. But throughout the project, we have corrosive soils. Um, so that they've, they've recommended and it, they kinda use the analogy of, you know, if you would be doing it today, uh, what kind of pipe would you put in? And, you know, they, they would recommend highly that because of the soil conditions that we would put plastic wr- wrapped pipe in there, so.
I, I'm asking that because it's interesting, because I believe, um, Mr. Notch provided the council with this information. And it's from the, uh, Ductile Iron Pipe Research Association. So I thought, um, and here it says, it li- it says, "Modern ductile iron pipe is made to last for a hundred years." And then it references, "Modern ductile pipe again should last for over a hundred years." Um, so I was, I'm kinda curious, did you talk to them what that means? Because obviously this pipe is almost fifty years old. So is that considered modern pipe? Or is what they're installing today, the modern pipe?
Yeah, well, I, I think definitely the stuff that's in, installed today is modern. Um, I don't know where the cutoff is for modern or not. It might have been when they started wrapping it, um, and, and maybe coating. Because there's different coatings on the pipe now too as well. Um, I don't know if, if, uh, Allison has any input on, you know, when, what, what the difference between modern and non-modern ductile iron pipe is. But, um, I would think it would be the wrapping of it.
It's just in- interesting that they say modern. Um, the other thing it says here, "It is resistant to corrosion in most soils and typically requires only effective economical polyethylene encasement, which is a loose sheathing standardized by the American Waterworks Association in aggressive environments." And so, um, what you're saying, your conversation with them is, it should all be wrapped. So, um, but I, it's interesting. This is, um, the Ductile Iron Pipe Research Association. And when I asked who the members are, they're manufacturers of duck pipe, ductile iron piping. So obviously they're promoting their product. So it might be a conflict of interest. I know you've mentioned that before, so, um, interesting. But, um, with that said, um, so, a few questions, um. Some of the, so the concerns, let's address the concerns of the residents. One, um, one gentleman sent an email, um, having a concern about his driveway. It's a concrete stamped driveway, and he's concerned about, um, it being impacted and how would that be repaired? Allison, do, can you address that or talk about, let's say, that driveway, but any, all the driveways basically?
Certainly. So the, the process when it comes to driveway repairs is the driveway is saw cut at the location of, of where the removals need to take place. In the instance such as this, what we typically do with a concrete driveway or something, something of that nature is we look at where the, the joint is, where, um, where there's already an expansion joint um, and use that opportunity to, to have that as the removal limit. Um, with a specialty driveway, like a stamped concrete, uh, we would provide samples, uh, color samples to the property owner to choose which one would best match the existing driveway and then replace in kind.
Do they color match it?
As best as they can. Similar to like blacktop and, and concrete, there will be a, a period of time where it's, it's not a consistent color between the two. They do their best to match the color as best possible.
And in the past, we've had some driveway issues or driveway, some specialty driveways that we've had to address. Have, have they been resolved fairly well? I mean, how has that worked out?
Yep, I, it's, you know, there's, to my knowledge, all of the driveways have been, you know, they get, they get, uh, repaired after the project. Uh, we had the one that we just finished up here recently on Minneapolis. Um, that was certainly a, a different, a different case in that one. But, um, they, they get restored so residents can get back on their property.
Okay. In the construction time, you mentioned it would be about six, six weeks with maybe some overlap. What is the construction time if you did a reclamation project?
Uh, so for a reclamation project, I think you would still phase it, um, because it is a larger area. So you'd probably still do three phases, each phase taking between three and four weeks, depending on what you would do for, if you kept it all rural or if you put in some curb and gutter.
Um, and then, let's talk a little bit more about tree loss, 'cause I know that that's, um, a concern of residents. Um, and I did drive it and I've seen your beautiful trees. There are a few that are small and, and insignificant, if you wanna call it that, that could easily be replaced with same-sized trees. Um, especially there's a couple of, um, small evergreens that could be replaced as well. But when we're talking about large, um, they're either sugar maples or, um, silver maples, maybe even bass. But it's kinda hard to tell at this time of year when there's no leaves on them. Um, are there, um, so you were talking about possibly moving the water line, possibly moving, shifting a little bit here and there, the road. Uh, would you be doing that with either the reconstruction and/or the reclamation?
Um, well, if you're doing the reclamation only, you're not replacing the water mains. So we, that would, that would take, um, some of the tree impacts away. Uh, with a reclamation project, you really, I, I mean, you, you can do some shifting. With a reclamation project, you really, I mean, you can do some shifting of the roadway to try to avoid tree impacts. However, at that point then, you're, if you're shifting a road, you have to build a new section of road to replace the part that you're changing. So, it's certainly technically a component, but then we start looking at the scope of the project creeping a little bit, depending on how many, how many trees would fall into that category of shifting.
And in your count, how many trees were there, 41?
I thought 41. I was looking at the, at the two exhibits. And that's based on, when you look at a preliminary design, you take a look at the water main alignment, and you assume a one and a half to one, you know, your depth, your safe trench. And that's, you get to your construction limits with that and then plus the water services. So it's a, it's a very cursory view of, and I think it was intentionally put as tree conflicts, not tree impacts, because we haven't done the final design to dictate that that's exactly how many trees would be. It was to provide, it was to provide an idea of how many trees would be looking at.
So the 41 would be the worst-case scenario?
I would certainly hope so, because it's just looking at worst-case scenario on a preliminary design.
Okay, and then, with other projects that you've done, and you've done a worst-case scenario, how many trees have you, I know it's kinda hard to quantify, but have you been able to save 20% or 30% of them? I mean, what's?
It's hard to put a number on them. So certainly there's opportu, I can give you some examples of when we've been able to save trees, if that provides the council with some better, some better ideas. So for example, alignment of the road has shifted to save a tree. And we've moved water services to save trees. There's been.
What about fire hydrants?
Fire hydrants could certainly be moved. You wanna keep adequate spacing, but you can certainly move the location of a fire hydrant if it's in conflict of a high-quality tree that's desired to be saved.
Okay. And so, utility-wise, we're only talking sewer and water, correct?
Correct, and in this instance, we would, there's, we're not anticipating sewer replacement, which is deeper than the water.
There's some. Thank you. Yeah, is our other utilities such as, well, the gas would have to be either moved or identified, or what, do you know what's happening with that? Or will that be identified in the?
We will contact the small utility company and find out if they have gas main replacement needs in the area, in the project area. Storm sewer is shallow. It's typically between three and five feet up near the curb line. So it's, the shallower ones tend to be a little bit easier to move around. It's the deeper pipe that causes the impacts. We can also look at opportunities to use trench boxes instead of open cuts. Trench boxes are basically like a, if you imagine like a hollow Lego, that one goes on top of the other so that they don't have to dig a trench out, and they can minimize the impacts that way as well.
Okay. And are there any, is there, what kind of protection is provided for the tree roots? Because I know certain trees are more susceptible for compaction than others. So, what kind of protection is provided for those?
We would rely on the tree specialist to tell us which trees would need cert, there's, there's, you can do like a root cut, and I'm not a tree expert, so that's why we look at tree specialists to assist people like me. But you can look at these vibratory cuts of the root system so that the roots don't get impacted by the equipment. There are some trees that, you know, if they're able to withstand construction close by, you would put up tree protection fencing, that sort of thing. Those are the mechanisms that come to mind.
Okay, and then can you work with the individual property owners, whether trees might be saved? Or, I mean, do you work with individual property owners then?
Certainly, I mean, there's, when we look at these design opportunities, if there's, if residents want to save a tree, we, at Open Houses, we make note of that. There's other opportunities. If the council wants to proceed with a reconstruction project, once we have a final design plan, we could certainly look at another opportunity to meet with residents and go through that, should the council want us to do that, to talk through. Tree impacts, construction, what we're seeing for construction, depending on where you're at in the schedule, if there's a contractor already, that's already bid on it, that has provided a schedule, that might be helpful as well.
And then, you talked a little bit before about bidding timeframe, saying that the bidding timeframe, the best time to bid a project is sometime in January?
Well, typically for larger projects, and I know historically the councils looked at this because there, we had bid projects later in the season. We like to look at earlier in the year because, in January, February timeframe, because that's when contractors are starting to look for work for that construction season. And when we try to get as many bidders interested in the project as possible, they have a, you know, it's a competitive bidding process, and so we like to see competitive bid prices for the project. The concern with moving later in the bidding season for a project of this size in particular, if you move it to later in the bidding season, you know, if contractors have already been successful low bidders on other projects, and they're not able to take on a project of this size, you know, you've very likely decreased the pool of contractors that have the capacity to do a project such as this.
Okay, so that begs the next question. If the council were to pivot right now and decide to go down the path of reclamation, basically, and Sarah, you might wanna weigh in on this, we have to start from square one, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is correct. From speaking with the city engineer's office, it was determined that the feasibility report did not have reclamation as an option in the feasibility report. So when you held the public hearing on the improvement project, that was on the project that's before you tonight, not the reclamation project. So, in order to do the reclamation project, you would need to move forward with directing, you know, a feasibility report and ordering that. And then, once you get the feasibility report, having an improvement hearing on that particular project. That's a whole separate project and a whole separate process.
Okay. So, because it's a 429, because we're doing assessments, we have to go through all of these steps in order to get to the final project. So, with that said, we would have to do a feasibility report. It would have to come back to the council. Then we would have to authorize, then we would, if we wanted to move forward with that based on the feasibility report, then we'd wanna do another neighborhood meeting, talking about what we can and can't do. And then, we'd have to have a public hearing. And then, we'd have to authorize plans and specifications. And then, we'd have to accept those plans and specifications and authorize those to go out for bid. What is the timing? So, is it even feasible to get good pricing? Is it even feasible to do that for 2023?
So, in that scenario, you would not be able to hit a January, February, March timeframe for bidding. You would be looking at a late spring bidding timeframe.
So basically, we would be, we'd have to really consider a 2024 project instead?
If, if correct, if you're not interested in the late-season bidding.
Right, well, okay. Can you also just quickly describe why we're, you mentioned, you mentioned about the six-inch versus the eight-inch? Is it pressure?
It has to do, it's the, the eight-inch is the standard for fire protection. And I don't know how that factors into the city's, I think the fire, they have a fire safety rating of the city, and so you go in with eight-inch. And then, I don't know if Public Works Director Peters has any operational components that benefits of going from six-inch to eight-inch.
It's for increased fire protection, for increased flow, so you can have multiple trucks hooked into the system if you need to.
Okay, alright. Okay, one more thing. So we talked a little bit about stormwater runoff and improvements. We heard some people say that they're concerned about that. Can you tell us, could the, in particular, there's several homes that are on, in this project area that I know you've spoken to them, that have severe or serious stormwater runoff issues. Can those be addressed with a reclamation project?
So with the reclamation project on its own without curb and gutter, that I don't anticipate that the bulk of those concerns could be addressed. My understanding of the storm sewer runoff issues that are in play, that exist right now, is the goal is to install concrete curb and gutter to direct the drainage so that we can get it into a storm sewer pipe and off the roadway surface.
Okay, so, alright. Other questions?
Let me ask. With all you've heard tonight, did anybody change their mind? No, okay, that's fine, thank you.
So.
How did we decide on the PVC versus the ductile iron?
So, the switch to using PVC pipe occurred sometime around late 90s, early 2000s. I haven't seen any documentation as to why the city shifted to that. Having, having worked in another community that had corrosive soils, the switch was to PVC because of, it didn't, you didn't have to worry about wrapping your water main pipe. The PVC was inert and wasn't subject to the corrosive soils.
I have a question here. Of the breaks that have happened, you said 11 of them. Could you say that they were caused by the corrosive soils?
I can't say for certain. I don't have the records of it. It simply said hole in pipe or crack. I don't know if there's a way to differentiate after the fact to look at if there was a hole in pipe. Certainly, when you look at corrosion, you would wanna look at the thickness of the wall of the pipe that broke, and to my knowledge, that wasn't reported.
How do you get a hole in a pipe?
If there's been, other examples besides corrosion on a pipe would be if, during backfilling practices, if the backcooperator wasn't careful and there was a large rock, for example, came down and damaged the pipe. That would be one, certainly frost plays into, can play into it. Differential settlement from the soils, and you, and the things, and shifts on you. Those would all be causes of water main breaks.
And every time the pipe breaks, I'm assuming it gets weaker and weaker and doesn't last as long as it should for 100-foot pipe?
Well, you have, you have bands throughout there. And I don't know if there's been any experience of bands failing through the city, but certainly you start getting, if you see portions of the pipe failing now, the question, the question I ask is what's to stop the rest of the pipe from reacting that way?
Okay. Pam, John, anybody else? So, we've heard a lot, and again, I wanna say, so tonight we have people here, majority here this evening are opposed to the full reconstruct. However, we have received a number of emails, both for and against, both for reclamation and for reconstruction. We actually have three groups of people that we've been listening to. We've been listening to all of you that are in favor of reclamation. We've been listening to the people that are in favor of reconstruction. But we also have been listening to our taxpayers that are the other 2,900 property owners in our, in our community. And, and I've been talking to them as well, and I've been hearing their input. And I've been hearing a lot of people say to me, "Why would you ever do this project without replacing that water line?" And that, that's their question. And they've been watching, they've been watching the meetings, they've been hearing what we've been hearing. And I recently was at a meeting, and we had a gentleman do our presentation. And he was a, he was an individual that works for the Builders Association, and he gathers information, and he gathers statistics. And he was saying that a statement without data is simply an opinion. So, I said to my, I thought to myself, okay, let's look at the data. If we look at the data, the data tells a story. We cannot ignore the data, and the data tells us that 70% of these ductile iron pipes that were installed back in the 70s with corrosive soils fail after 60 years. That says there's only a 30, this is the data, this is not my opinion. It says, the data says that beyond 60 years, there's only a 30% probability that this pipe is going to last. I sit here as a council member, as a mayor, as a leader in this community, as do we all. We have an obligation to listen to you, we absolutely have. I believe we can address many of your concerns, the driveway concerns, the loss of trees. We're going to lose some, but we would lose some with reclamation as well. But we also have to address the stormwater issues. We also will have been addressing the time. I know people said they don't wanna deal with, you know, five months of construction time. However, now with this phasing, we realize that it's gonna be six to 12 weeks in your area. So that's significantly less than what we have originally thought. We will continue to work with the residents in, on their own properties regarding their own issues. But I think it would be a gamble. We would be taking taxpayer money and gambling with it if we did a reclamation project. That is not what I'm going to recommend. That is not what I'm going to be voting for, because these aren't just your dollars. These are our dollars, and it's a lot of money. And if we do a reclamation project today, and then we have to go in 10 years from now and dig it all up and redo it, it's going to cost us twice as much. If we all, the other thing I'd like to point out to the council currently, we spent $85,000 on this project so far, both in neighborhood meetings, in postings, in all of our time, in engineering time, and all of that, $85,000. A lot of that will be down the drain, so to speak. I'm not willing to toss that money out when I know that the correct project here is doing a reconstruct. You can tell, you can differ with me, you can have a different opinion, that's fine. But I was elected to be fiscally responsible with our tax dollars. I don't see it that way. I don't see being fiscally responsible with our tax dollars when we're putting a new road over a 50-year-old pipe that has already shown corrosion, that is, wasn't installed according to today's modern recommendations. We would have to, even the Ductile Iron Pipe Association is telling us, "Dig it up and wrap it." Well, that would be the same as doing a complete reconstruction project. So, I'm, I'm, and this is from the association that Mr. Notch presented us with, and we've talked with them. We've talked with them, we found out what the actual, what's going on here. So, I think with, we need to, we need to address the stormwater issues, which we can't with the reclamation project. We, we can address some of them, not all of them. We know we can't address all of them. So with that, that's kinda where I'm standing. I, I cannot just set aside, we have our engineering group with WSB, we have our engineering group with AE2S. We actually hired AE2S because they are one of the premier water infrastructure engineering firms in our state. We hired them because we value their experience and their expertise. And they are telling us as well, "Change or redo this pipe at this time." And that is true, I've talked to them. So I'm not gonna argue with Mr. Notch, I'm not gonna argue with you. You can, we will agree to disagree. And, but I cannot take, I cannot take staff's recommendation and set it aside. I can't take two engineering firms' recommendation and set it aside for an open source project. I can't take two engineering firms' recommendation and set it aside for an opinion based on information that we have that says you should actually fix this ductile iron piping. So I'm going to go with the recommendations that were made by staff, by our engineers, and by the information that I have. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Okay, and there's no question in my mind that at some point in time, this project has to be done. But I have not seen this degree of hostility, ever. Not that I have that much experience in politics, but um, I, I don't believe that a city should force a group of people to have something they don't want as a, as a whole. My apology to the people who want it. I'm going to vote no uh, to the whole thing and to shelve it for future consideration. Um, simply because, again, even if this list isn't correct, there are enough names on here to be a majority. And it's the majority of people in this, in this place after hearing all that you've heard. As I said, there's no question in my mind, this project needs to be done, but timing is everything. And the timing here does not appear to be correct, so I'm voting no.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
I have to vote that we proceed with it as proposed. Part of what I'm here for, coming from an accounting background, and part of the city's motto is to provide those services in a cost-effective manner. That doesn't mean penny-conscious dollar foolish. This, as Anne has alluded to, is going to have to be done. If we're going to just go with a reclaim, and that's still going to be a million plus as a twenty to twenty-five-year life, I don't feel comfortable that this water main is not going to have a major problem with him. Yeah, it's speculative, I know, it's subjective, not objective. And I like objective things. But I feel that we're going to end up digging, spending a million plus, not being able to do some of the stormwater things, which I think is a positive to the community, and end up tearing out, tearing up a new road within the next ten years. And you're going to end up with patchwork that you have today that you want to do away with. I, I, I think when Ductile Iron Pipe Research Association themselves suggest, probably use the word recommend because probably don't want to go out on the fence, but highly suggested that the pipe be dug up and wrapped to be able to give it additional life. Why would we dig up a six-inch pipe and wrap it? We won't. So what does that mean? If we're going to go, if we, if I'm concerned the pipe's not going to last, then obviously put in a new eight-inch in, better for fire protection, better for the community. And it's a new pipe, not going to be ductile iron, but city right now uses the, the other. But that's why I feel we need to proceed with this as it's been proposed.
Okay. Anybody else?
Um, well, I will weigh in on this. Um, timing is everything. Um, I do agree with that. And I've been on this council for eight years, and I've seen a lot of projects throughout these eight years, and they have been done very, very successfully. And that is because we have had great input from our uh, Public Works um, Director over there, our engineering staff, our legal department, there's many elements involved to a decision like this. And I am not comfortable, I grew up that when I do something and I find something needs to be fixed before the project is done right, you do it correct. So I am not comfortable laying and doing a complete reconstruction without doing the water repair or utility improvements. And like Mayor Whalen stated, we are here to represent all the residents of Minatrista. Not just the group that lives on the road that is, or roads that are being done at this time. So I am in favor of doing this project uh, because I believe this is the right way to go.
Okay. Any comments, Kathleen?
Um, I'll, I'll just second what you guys said. I, I, the road needs to be fixed, and I, makes no sense to just replace the top eight inches of it and not fix the water main, which I think will need to be replaced within ten years. I don't think anybody wants a new patchwork road five years down the road. And if this happen, if we do the reclamation with the top eight inches and the water main breaks and it becomes patchwork, we have to do this all over again, do the full reconstruction, and you will get assessed again. That is not fiscally responsible. I don't think anyone here would like to be reassessed another ten thousand dollars plus in ten years because the whole road needs to be redone to replace the water main. I am for the project as presented.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Um, then um, we can move on. I'm looking for a resolution um, to approve professional services agreement for the final design and bidding services for a project number uh, for the utility, for the street and utility reconstruction project, city project number zero one dash two three.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No, okay. Four ayes. Ms. McGregor, no. And then a resolution ordering improvements and authorizing preparations of plans and specifications.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Trumperlin made that second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? No. Um, four ayes. McGregor, no. So now we'll move on to the um, North Arm and Fielding Trail area uh, project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, I did not prepare a presentation for this, this one this evening. I just wanted to give a quick recap as to what this project entails, uh, which is the reclamation of North Arm Drive, Trails End Road, and Trails End Circle, and also the mill and overlay and partial replacement of curb and gutter on Timber Trail. Minor drainage improvements are proposed through, throughout the project, both the reclamation and the mill and overlay area. Public hearing was held on October third, um, with input provided to the council. The estimated project cost for uh, for this area is one point two nine million with preliminary assessment amounts for the reclamation portion at ten thousand per residential unit. Um, and uh, the Burloaks Gul- Golf Club at a total of forty-five thousand dollars. Um, again, there are two items similar to the previous project for council consideration this evening. Uh, one is to adopt a resolution ordering the project, and the other one is to approve professional services for final design and bidding services. Um, and authorizing the preparation of final plans and specifications.
Okay. Much less contentious. Um, right. And I will say, I agree with you, Anne. This is probably the most and only contentious project that we've ever had, and it is very sad that, that it's like this. And I hate to say it, but it's sad when you have neighbor against neighbor. It is sad. And unfortunately, there is a lot of misinformation out there. That was um, not good, that didn't help the process at all. So with that, um, questions, counsel? Hearing none, then, is there a motion to approve fresh, professional services agreement for the final design and bidding services for city project number zero two dash two three?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, um, Ms. Refkin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. And then the next resolution is ordering improvements and authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications for same project.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So next we have um, approved professional services and authorized preparation uh, for the sanitary sewer replacement. That's project city number oh four dash two three.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm sure you're tired of hearing my voice, but I'll make this one quick as well. Um, a little background on this, uh, earlier this year, Public Works became aware of a settlement issue on a sanitary manhole between two homes off of Glacier Circle in the southwest portion of the city. Um, to correct the work, uh, the re, the manhole needs to be reconstructed. And it, it, as such, twenty, about twenty feet of sanitary sewer on each side of that um, manhole would need to be replaced. Recommending a budget of seventy-one thousand four hundred dollars for this work. Um, the proposal includes design, bidding, and construction administration services uh, for your consideration this evening. The, the professional services also includes a wetland delineation because of course, there are a wetland nearby. Um, and we are coming to the close of the growing season, um, but uh, they did confirm, the wetland professionals did confirm that they would be able to perform a wetland delineation this week, um, should the council authorize this work. Uh, plans and specifications would be brought back to the council in December. Um, and pending approval on that, we would distribute that work to contractors to quote the work. Uh, we would bring back quotes in January uh, to the council for consideration for award of contract. Um, and then we've also talked a little bit, this is, this is a fairly small project, and so um, what we've, what we're looking to do as far as um, bidding or getting quotes for this project is to provide a, a fairly large window of time for a contractor to start the work. But then once started, indicate you must complete work substantially within a, I mean, a couple of weeks, I think is pretty generous for this. And in effort to do so, um, i- and to get good prices for this type of work, um, but also, again, keep that, that time uh, timeframe for the work to be completed um, with, with, within a reasonable amount of time to so we can minimize the disruption to those residents, so. Um, I, in the.
So they can do it anytime between June and September, but it only will be, what, six weeks or something like, whatever.
Two weeks. Yeah, a couple of weeks, I mean, that's, that's
Right.
generous, I think, so. That, that's what the plan is. Um, I included a, a, a map or a, an aerial in the council package to show you where the, the location is approximately. Um, Public Works Director Peters has indicated that um, he would reach out to the property owners, talk about, there's just the two of them. Talk about what the project would entail. Um, of course, there's some landscaping in the area, so we would work with them as far as, you know, what would be impacted with this, with, with this repair so that they're comfortable with everything.
How does this happen?
Um, it, it's, a settlement would be due to soils. Um, so when the, you know, especially if there's, with wetlands being nearby, um, you certainly do correct for that, but that would be my guess.
It's actually, it's a frost heave.
Oh, it's a frost.
It went up. So because of the swamp being right there and it's a very shallow manhole, um, with the, you know, with the frost being deep, it pushed it up over the years. Uh, it's come to light, so the new construction will be to put in a deeper manhole filled with concrete to keep it from doing this in the future. Now, similar what we do with a lot of our um, shallow catch basins.
Okay. Good question, though, because we wouldn't want it to happen again.
Exactly.
Good question. Yeah, thank you. Alright, alright. Any other questions? So is there then a motion to approve the professional services and authorized preparation of plans and specifications for the twenty-three sanitary sewer replacement project city number oh four dash two three?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. That concludes our business items, so we'll move on to administrative items. Um, I asked Pal, Ellie Paul Foose to give us just a quick voting update, and I had a question earlier. I was asked, well, what is the difference between in-person early voting and absentee fa- ballots or voting? So maybe just quickly.
Sure, I can give a little uh, update, and Dawn can correct me because she's the expert. But um, in-person voting is open at City Hall during normal business hours. During that time, residents can come in, it can cast their ballot, um, and that is then sent to the county for counting. Residents can also receive a mail-in ballot that is from the county, and they can either drop that off at City Hall, but most residents mail that in. You do have to absentee vote by three P M. on Election Day. So that is it in a nutshell. And we've had a hundred and ten in-person absentee ballots so far, which is more than we were expecting, so.
Good.
Yes, it's busy.
Great. Alright, um, now lieutenant, it says here lieutenant squires, but obviously lieutenant squires is not here this evening. So um, Officer Heinz is here. Just can you give us a quick update on the chief?
Yeah, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, Chief Falls is at the International Association of Chiefs of Police Convention down in Dallas, Texas for October fifteenth through the eighteenth. There he'll be attending a wide variety of trainings and session speakers
Okay.
to uh, while he's down there.
Yeah, yeah, great. No, it's good, um, good networking as well, and um, it'll be good to see him back because I know he was on vacation prior to this, and so, and uh, so not that, we're not happy that you're here, we're glad you're here too. So nice to see different faces once in a while, but we'll have the chief back here. Um, next time, November fourteenth. Any other staff updates? I don't think so. So I'll just quick, um, so at our next, uh, I'm sure you all got, and unfortunately, Ms. Refkin got much of it. Um, water rate, um, emails and uh, phone calls, and um, I know our staff was inundated with that. So I've asked Jasper if we could just have that on a work session at our November fourteenth meeting. He was on vacation last week. I didn't want to inundate him with this um, the day he got back. So we're going to talk about those. Will, will, will you survive, Kathleen? Okay, um, and I'm having a few meetings with some people as well. Just some personal, private meetings by invite only, and I'll report back on that. I did um, attend the Northwest League eh, last week, and like I said, there was um, a in gentleman from the Builders Association with lots of statistics and uh, interesting. So um, basically talking about the housing market. Uh, let's see, any, I don't think I have any real pressing upcoming things, but obviously just get out and vote, buyer before November eighth.
Um, I'm planning to attend the Planning Committee meeting next week.
Your last Planning Commission meeting?
My last Planning Committee meeting.
Alright.
And I am planner Sarah Creek this Thursday, the twentieth.
Okay.
I have the mound fire commission meeting on November thirty.
Great, alright. That concludes our meeting, if there's an adjournment.
So moved.
Okay, John, I'll give it to you this time. John made that motion, and Kathleen seconded that. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you.